I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, July 2nd at 6:00 PM. All council members are present besides Councilmember Greenstein, who's attending remotely. With that, if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also want to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. We also have one amendment to this evening's agenda. We need to remove item 13A, the six-year tip presentation. That's not ready to go and will be addressed in a future meeting. With that, can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda and consent agenda?
I move to approve the amended agenda.
And consent agenda. Is there a second?
And consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moving seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have approved our amended agenda and consent agenda. Next up on our approved amended agenda is a public comment. We did have one written public comment. And we also have one person who's here wishing to address this as council. Janelle? Yep. Can you please approach the podium? And let us know who you are and where you're from and keep your comments about three minutes.
Okay, so my name is Janelle Rainier Briggs. I know you've all heard from me because I've been sending emails recently. I'm a city of Lacey resident with my husband Douglas Briggs. I've been in the city for about 39 years now. And I'm here to discuss the jail services agreement that you have with the Nisqually jail and the conditions in which my son is living in, in that current jail. So my son is 28 years old. He's a father of three, and I just lost my spot. And he suffers from bipolar two major depressive disorder and CPTSD. So those incidents have led to some self-harm episodes in which one resulted in a domestic violence incident when his girlfriend was trying to stop him from hurting himself. So he became a city of Lacey, was arrested by the police and taken to the hospital to seal up his arm and then to Nisqually jail. That was last year, 2023, May. He, in another episode, had injured his low back, L5 S1 with a bulging disc. And just prior to that, they had said he needed to have surgery for that. And they were scheduling that out until about May-June of 2023. So he has severe low back pain. He has what they call periforma syndrome and sciatica. That is the result of the L5 disc. It's retrolythosis so that the disc actually goes back and compresses that disc. So over the past year, he has managed the pain with medicinal marijuana, opposing any kind of narcotics because he does have addictive tendencies. He is an alcoholic. So over the past year and prior to going to the jail, he was using medicinal marijuana. And he was waiting to be eligible for another back surgery. The back surgery in August of 2023 failed. And they told him that he had to wait about six to eight months to have another surgery. So that would have taken us to about mid-April of this year. So he was on probation for that domestic violence charge. And in April of this year, he was taken to court for probation violations. And none of those were related to the domestic violence incident or any kind of violation of his no contact order. The violation stemmed from his alcohol use and from his medicinal marijuana use. So at that hearing, the city attorney was made aware of my son's mental health and medical conditions. The defense attorney and I both expressed concerns that the jail would not be able to manage his mental health or his medical needs. When he went into the jail, he made jail staff aware of his low back injuries and his mental health. And the nurse mentioned at that time that he had very high blood pressure and asked if that was normal for him. It wasn't, and he didn't know why it was high. And they didn't explore that further.
You're over on your time. Do you have like something you can wrap up with real quick?
I can. So basically, I'm asking you to consider looking into your contract with the Nisqually jail and with Wellpath, who is the medical provider that they use. Wellpath is now currently in about 51 different lawsuits across the country for negligence and medical malpractice. And they have not had a doctor in the jail at Nisqually for over five weeks. My son was taken to the ER. He has an aneurysm. That was five weeks ago. He has not been medically treated or even observed or monitored for that. Somebody here said the jail is ensuring that his medical needs are being met. And I can tell you that they are not being met. His blood pressure was 178 over 120. He's had it taken twice since his visit. Two days ago, there wasn't a nurse on site to give the diabetics and the seizure, the person with the seizure episode. My son held that man through his seizure. He did not get his medication that night because they had no medical staff. So I'm asking you to consider moving my son to a facility where he can get the medical and mental health care that he needs.
Okay. Thank you.
And I will send this letter to you and email.
Okay, thanks. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council? Seeing none, then let's go into the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, for the city manager report, we just have a couple of items, a couple creeping in and an overview and report out. Don't know if you're aware, I think July is Parks and Recreation Month, National Recognition. And with that, without further ado, to celebrate Parks and Recreation Month, I want to turn it over to Jen Burridge, our Parks and Culture and Recreation Director, to kind of provide an overview of our parks programs and annual report.
Thank you. Well, good evening. And tonight, Sue Faye Lash, our Recreation Manager, and myself are going to co-present. But I will get us started with July is Parks and Recreation Month. And I also, I wanted to acknowledge that I see Jim Camber here from the Park Foundation of Thurston County. That's the Parks Arts and Cultural Foundation. And so thank you for coming tonight and thanks for your support. In 2023, they contributed $6,000 to our financial assistance program and also helped and are going to be continuing to help pursue a grant through REI for the Gray Kyo Park Phase 1A project. But so here tonight, staff in the Parks and Recreation industry, including the Parks Maintenance Team from Public Works and also the Parks Culture and Recreation employees here in Lacey, we simply love what we do. We love it because what we do is direct service to our community. And it's a chance to foster connections between neighbors. So for example, you know, during a photography class or kids creating core memories at a day camp program. So those programs are up and running right now. And the kiddos are out there just having a great time. Or creating literal space in the community for people to get outside and enjoy nature. So I'm excited to peel back the curtain for you tonight a little bit about a few of the ways that the work that our teams connect with the community. And then Sue is going to wrap us up by reviewing some specifics that came out of 2023. And just a quick note, all of the pictures you see in this presentation are from, they were taken in Lacey parks or at our programs. So none of these are stock photos. So Parks and Recreation Month is celebrated to promote building strong, vibrant, and resilient communities through the power of Parks and Recreation and to recognize more than 160,000 full-time park and recreation professionals, along with hundreds of thousands of part-time and seasonal workers and volunteers who maintain our country's local, state, and community parks. So National Parks and Recreation Association theme this year is Where You Belong. This celebrates the many ways that professionals across the country foster that sense of belonging in their communities by providing welcoming, inclusive programs, essential services for all ages and abilities, and safe, accessible spaces to build meaningful connections. So here in Lacey, we're celebrating Parks and Recreation Month by elevating the benefits to our neighbors, the benefits of visiting park spaces and participating in recreation and museum programs. We're uplifting the many reasons why local parks and recreation truly embodies the essence of belonging. And together, we can demonstrate why these spaces are where you belong. In addition to sharing this information with you and the public this evening, during the month of July, staff have prepared a special social media campaign to highlight our staff and increase outreach to the community. So I'm going to be showing you the first video tonight. But keep an eye out on our Facebook over the next few weeks. Let's see if we can get this video going here. Thank you, Shannon.
Let's take a short walk to nearby Rainier Vista Park. In Lacey, most folks are half a mile or 10 minutes away from their local park. Living close to parks and other recreation facilities is related to higher physical activity for both adults and youth. Parks also provide a connection to nature. Studies demonstrate that this relieves stress, strengthens relationships, and improves your mental health. We took a short walk around the outer loop and then hung out and played some frisbee. Justin has some sick catches here. Check this out. Parks also counter social isolation by connecting people with nature and festivals, parades, and other social events. It was really great to walk out to Rainier Vista. Happy July is Parks Month from Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation. Let's take a short walk.
So yeah, the services offered by Parks and Recreation fosters connection, counters social isolation by connecting people with nature and each other, as the video said, through festivals, parades, and social events, performing arts, tours, and other programs. And as the city of Lacey continues to grow and welcome new residents, our free events and affordable classes and programs are a great way for people to get connected and find that sense of belonging. Studies show the links between Parks and Recreation Services and positive childhood development outcomes. Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of childcare and out-of-school time programming, a leader in youth sports, providing opportunities for children of all skills and abilities to play and introducing kids to a wide variety of sports and activities. Participating in outdoor recreation bolsters adolescent resilience to external stressors and improves overall adolescent mental health. The positive effects of nature exposure for children include improved cognitive functioning. So that's increased concentration, greater attention capacities, and higher academic performance. Better motor coordination, reduced stress levels, increased social interaction with adults and other children, and improved social skills. And then regarding physical and mental health, this might seem more obvious, but it's still really important to mention that being outside and recreating has positive impacts to both mental and physical health. So Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, playgrounds, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles at a low barrier to entry. Living close to parks and other recreation facilities is consistently related to higher physical activity levels for both adults and youth. Parks provide a connection to nature, which studies demonstrate relieve stress, strengthen interpersonal relationships, and improve mental health. Time spent in nature positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorder, and Alzheimer's. And then regarding environmental factors, not only are park spaces good for the community, but they're also good for the environment. So the industry is an essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes communities more resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. Parks lower ground temperatures with tree canopy, clean water, reduce flooding, and contribute to healthier air. Trees and vegetation in parks help reduce air pollution directly by removing pollutants and reducing air temperature. Urban parks can improve the environment, enhance stormwater management, reduce traffic noise, and increase biodiversity. Regarding economic factors, this is kind of a less obvious benefit, but there is a positive economic impact that local Parks and Recreation has on communities. The Parks and Rec industry increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, and the attraction and retention of businesses. So in the state of Washington, the Parks and Recreation industry supported over 23,400 jobs in 2019, resulting in a $6.4 billion economic activity. And the state is going to be updating that report here in the next year or so, from what I understand. But now that we've shared some of the large-scale benefits that the Parks and Recreation industry provide our communities, let's take a look at the awesome work that the employees right here in Lacey are doing.
Good evening. Appreciate you having me here today to talk about the wonderful things that not only our staff has done, but also the Public Works staff because we're a very integral team. We can't do one without the other. So it's really nice to make sure that everybody's included in this. I can speak for both Parks Maintenance and Parks Culture and Recreation teams by saying the work we do is a service to our community, residents, locals of Thurston County, and the families coming to Lacey for sports tournaments and everything in between. We have great festivals. We have great fireworks. People are coming in from all over just because of the things that Lacey provides. A little overview for the Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation. Our Parks Culture and Recreation team, we have 18 full-time employees, many part-time staffers, and several contracted instructors and a few interns. The work comes together to provide a broad set of services for the neighborhood. We have sports and fitness, sponsorships, marketing, community recreation, aquatics, our Lacey Museum, the Lacey Community Center, Jacob Smith House. We do park and shelter reservations. A lot of the park reservations, we provide the back support for programs such as the Barbecue Fest, the Polynesian Fest we just had, Financial Systems Program, and our volunteer program. Staff share these opportunities with community members in a variety ways. We had published a playbook that's online. We update, we have signs on our trail and kiosks that we update with QR codes. We will table and have tables at a lot of community events to market and spread the word about our programs. We did community outreach initiatives, community partners. We do a monthly digital newsletter for both the museum and the department as a whole. We have Facebook and Instagram and as well as our website. One thing to point out about the digital newsletter is we're reaching about 10,000 people each month. So it's been a really good asset for us. For the park maintenance overview, of course, none of the work we can do, like I said before, could be done without the park maintenance in the public work sector. Their stewardship of the Lacey parks and facilities is often thankless. But we couldn't have anything happen without them taking care of the facilities, the grounds, and everything else. Park maintenance houses 22 full-time employees in addition to part-time and seasonal staff. Last year, the crew logged 3,200 hours of labor, over 13,000 of which was janitorial or park cleanup, which is not a fun task, 5,000 of which was turf maintenance for our athletic fields, and another 200 towards tree maintenance, 2,400 for additional sports field maintenance, and so on. Kind of look at our annual report. You might know that each year, I work with the Parks Maintenance of the Public Works to put together this annual report. It is available in full on the website, but I'm going to hit just a couple of the highlights from '23 from both of our teams. Lacey Parks consists of 1,269 acres, 26 developed parks and trails, and 35 park properties. On these properties, a variety of trails, amenities such as sports fields, tennis courts, basketball courts, pickleball courts, youth fishing, disc golf course, and a skate park. Most residents, as Jen talked about earlier, we didn't really talk about it, went through our video, live within .5 mile drive or a 10-minute walk to a Lacey parks. Some of the areas that we highlighted in this report are athletic facilities. In 2023, the regional athletic complex was booked 345 out of 352 years out of the year. So it's very well-used, which added up to over 11,000 hours of rental usage, generating about $510,000 in revenue. We also have a longstanding agreement with North Thurston Public Schools where we generated 13,000 hours of North Thurston Public Schools and the city of Lacey regular parks outside of the RAC fields. In addition to that, we had 1,900 hours of pool usage scheduled for various user groups within the community. On recreation side, additionally, through our programming and special events, in 2023, we generated nearly 300,000 hours of recreation in the community. We put on 35 events in the community free of charge, and 66,000 attendees or around there in a total were offered opportunities fit for everyone and their families to get outside and connect with their neighbors and make new friendships. The last year, we offered 661 classes and programs ranging from swim lessons, Latin dancing, summer day camps, as well as adult hiking trips. This year, we were lucky and we were able to reconfigure or reinvent the Lacey, the Teen Acnites. And those have been a great success. The next part of our annual report, we're going to talk about is sponsorships, partnerships, and the budget. Sponsorships, in collaboration, we had 48 various sponsors for special events and the regional athletic complex banners. $66,700 were brought in to offset our operational costs to ensure that 35 community events were offered through or could remain free to the public. This amount does not include all of the in-kind products and offer things that we had that also came in. We are very lucky to be able to offer a financial assistance to those in our community that are not able to afford our programs or have a need. In our community, to eliminate the barrier for participation in Parks Recreation programming, we were able to award $7,800 in financial assistance, allowing 60 unique participants to engage in recreation program who likely otherwise would not have been able to. This year, we are reviewing our policy and process. This is a crucial service and assessing how we can have the best steward of these funds and how we can continue to have a positive impact for our residents. Volunteers are another great way that we connect up with the community. As you can see, we've had over $67,000 in basically labor hours through our volunteer program. Our volunteer program covers everything from youth coaches for youth basketball. We have youth coaches. Our Lacey Little T-ball is full of youth, or youth basketball is full of volunteers. We have volunteers in our parks that are working on cleaning up, removing ivy. We also have volunteers for our special events like the 3rd of July as well as the Lacey Spring Fun Fair. Annual report for the museum and the community buildings. In 2023, the Lacey Museum laid the groundwork and launched the Stories of the South Sound, an oral history project to collect stories of underrepresented cultural, racial, ethnic, and identity-based communities in the South Sound. They are working on this project again still this year in addition to creating new exhibits and conducting other improvements to the buildings. We look forward to sharing these in the next year's report. In addition to 2023, the museum hosted 930 visitors in person, had 323 virtual programming participants, and also had, which is part of our volunteer hours, they had 430 hours of volunteer time donated to our Lacey museum. The community buildings, every category in our community buildings matrix increased in 2023. Things are definitely starting to revive itself after COVID. I look forward to seeing how much we've increased this next year when we do this again. The community center, Jacob Smith House and Picknick Shelters, were all used more days this past year, resulting in nearly additional $100,000 in revenue. Parks Maintenance. As I'd said earlier, the things we do in Parks Culture and Recreation would not be possible without the park maintenance staff. As you can see from the slide here, they were very busy doing everything from, we had 1,113 work order requests they filled. They maintained 78 different park properties. They removed 68 instances of graffiti, which is a never-ending problem, and planted over 600 trees. In addition to that, one of the real assets of the park maintenance program is everything they do from showing up to help empty garbage cans to making sure that all of the parks are clean and in order for our programs. If we didn't have them, our programs wouldn't be nearly successful. They jump in anytime we have an opportunity, any chance. You know, if you've seen them through the holiday parade, you know, they're there, they're smiling, they're having a good time. So they are definitely an asset to our community as well. For the current conditions, in 2023, served as a strong reminder of the challenges for us to maintain our current services and commitments amid Lacey's growing population and park system aging infrastructure. Lacey has grown 33% in the last 10 years, 80% in the last 20. Nearly all of our playgrounds are out of warranty, and our recent comprehensive plan identified nearly 70 million worth of needed capital improvements or replacements. However, the last major investment in parks was when we passed the 220-02 Parks Bond. As we continue into 2024, we are excited to partner with our recently created Parks Improvement Fund work group to find a viable path forward. Thank you again, council members, for your support and opportunity to have these conversations. And we're fortunate that through your support and partnership with the Parks Maintenance that we are able to continue to provide our services and opportunities to our neighbors and foster community support. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sue. And I also apologize to Michelle for not introducing you. Thank you so much for being here, also with the Park Foundation and North Thurston Public School Board member. So we appreciate your attendance here tonight. And then just while I have the microphone, I wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow is continuing, over 50 years of tradition, with the 3rd of July Fireworks Spectacular event. This is going to be held at Rainier Vista Park. The event runs from 4:00 to 11:00 PM. We're supposed to have lovely weather. There's a lot of really fun activities. There's food vendors. There's going to be entertainment. And then, of course, the big fireworks show. So we're very excited about that. We want to thank the fireworks sponsors, Twin Star Credit Union and Capital Development Company for their sponsorship and contributions. And then just a reminder, the parking will be very full. So the parking lot there at Rainier Vista Park is going to be closed between 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM while the setup takes place. And then the lot will open at 3:00 PM. The event starts at 4:00, so it's going to fill up very fast. And so just to remind everybody, there is a free shuttle every 15 minutes. And that runs from Timberline High School, Mountain View Elementary, and Lakes Elementary. So some of the surrounding school lots there. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Sue, for a great report out. And as Jen said, we encourage everybody to get out to tomorrow's spectacular. It's going to be one of those great events once again. Next on the city manager report, I just want to give the council an update on the application. the application, requests for applications for the Parks Improvement Funding Group. As the council recalls at your June fourth council meeting, you passed Resolution eleven forty-eight that formed, in essence, the Parks Improvement Funding Work Group, and the purpose of this work group is to review the parks expansion and replacement projects, identified in the six-year carp- Parks Capital Improvement Program, analyze all available funding options, and recommend to the Lacy City Council a funding package identifying funding sources, including recommended amounts to implement a prioritized list of parks capital projects. A big task, and we're asking this group to, you know, form rather quickly and work rather quickly, once they're formed, to bring a recommendation to council by the end of this year. Currently, we, immediately after the passage of the resolution of the next day, our staff immediately pushed out announcements of the opportunity and requested community members to submit applications to join this work group or be considered to join this work group. And to date, I'm happy to say, we have about forty-five applicants that have already submitted their, you know, their interest in serving. Above those applications, thirty-eight would be considered late or voting members or as since residents of the city of Lacy or the Lacy UGA. There are also about thirteen would call out for for ex-official status, meaning that they are live outside of the city of Lacy or the Lacy UGA or are a member of one of the current city council advisory boards. Naturally, seven of those are have interest from the various advisory boards for the city of Lacy. So the application period closes on July seventh. So the meet, and as the council recalls, as part of the action and passage of the resolution, the council also formed a subcommittee consisting of council member Greenstein, Council Mayor Vasquez, and Councilman Dunning. And we met today to kind of talk about the process for reviewing those applications and and forming that recommendation to bring back to council in August. So next steps would be for the the council subcommittee to, again, review all those applications and identify those that they would like to bring in for an interview, and then eventually schedule interviews on the weeks of July fifteenth and July twenty-second, looking to have these two days within that timeframe that can work for both the subcommittee as well as the the applicants are selected for interview. The, as the council recalls, the work group could comprise of a minimum of seven and a maximum of thirteen members. At least seven of those members would need to be voting members, and then up to that thirteen can be a combination of voting, non-voting, and ex-official. So that's part of the package that the the council subcommittee will bring back for recommendation to council in August. So again, we're early in that stage. We're going to start the initial review of applications, but as applications come in until July seventh, encourage anybody listening out there, if you do have interest and haven't already submitted, please do so, because those will also be considered in this review and ultimate recommendation to council for appointment to this work group. With that quick update, I don't know if any of the council subcommittee members would have anything to add, or?
I would just like to say, you know, we got forty-six applicants, and that's really impressive, and it really just shows the marketing efforts and strategies that the city is doing in order to get the best people for these positions, and I think it's a good sign for the future. So thank you for for doing that.
Can you repeat the deadline, Rick?
July seventh.
Seventh, okay.
And I also want to make sure to acknowledge and thank the efforts by our Public Affairs Office, our Parks Department, and the City Clerk's Office for turning around very quickly the announcements and press releases and getting this information out to the community, because, again, using various methods, including social media, we were actually reach a broad audience and get a lot of interest. And reading the initial review of some of those applications, it does cross the span of our parks users, not just a single focus group.
Well, we wish the subcommittee all the luck trying to figure out the who who is going to be represented in that group, and so we know you'll do a good job with that. With that, is there any other questions? Okay, then let's go on to boards, commissions, and community reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor?
One quick report. The Thurston County Economic Development Council met on June twenty-sixth. We met out at Yelm School District, first time we have meeting out there. I think the the main thing from that one is is that we did get to see the VCB's Destination Master Plan. So my report will probably, probably obviously overlap a little bit with Councilmember Dunning's report, but I'll try to keep my report to the things that really pertain to the EDC. So in this Destination Master Plan, there's, you know, opportunities presented and kind of a community or county deficiencies in terms of, you know, what we want to look like in the in the near future and twenty years out. The 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 reason for the EDC receiving this briefing is that the VCB officer believes that there are some areas where the EDC can can champion some of the causes, and those areas include arts and entertainment, live music, nightlife, conference and meeting space, culinary destinations, new investments, diversified lodging, family attractions, innovation and technology, retail and commercial district development. So the the VCB, you know, really strongly wants to to join forces with the EDC to bring these types of, you know, businesses and opportunities to this area. So, you know, there are some things that the EDC, of course, obviously already doing, but is definitely willing to partner with the VCB in their new Destination Master Plan, which actually has about twenty-nine items that they they really want to begin pushing, and they've partnered with many, many local organizations. So we'll we'll see a whole lot more from that. And there are a couple, let's see, the WIDA Conference coming up July twenty-fifth, the Korean Startup Center in Seattle called COTEC. EDC will will have representation there. And I went to Polyfest this weekend, which was their fourth year doing Polyfest at the at the Regional Athletic Complex, and it was a, it was a, it was a good one. So that is my report.
Thank you. About Councilmember Greenstein?
Just one really quick one. EMS, Emergency Medical Service, Medical One, met on June twenty-seventh, and the bylaws, the rewriting of the bylaws I've been working on for quite some time were proposed in what we thought would be the final version. They were approved by the council unanimously and will now go to the Board of County Commissioners for their approval. And we had a meeting today, actually, on the comp plan that we've also been working on for several months, and we're getting very close to completion on that, and there should be, within the next thirty days, I would say we'll have a final version that we will then come set up time to present to this council. That is my report.
Thank you. About Councilmember Stedman?
No report.
Councilmember Cox?
All right, I'm going to make up for the shortness. I have three. Intercity Transit Authority met on June nineteenth. Intercity Transit Authority met on June nineteenth. Most of the meeting was devoted to taking care of routine business. We authorized the general manager to purchase and uplift one Ford work van in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Also to enter into lease agreements for warehouse space for the duration of Intercity Transit's expansion and rehabilitation construction project on Patterson Street. Essentially, operations is being asked to be in a much smaller space than they're accustomed to working in, so they're going to have to store some things until they can get into their new building. We we approved adding several new staff, staff positions. We adopted a resolution amending the employees' retirement plan and trust to allow Roth 401K contributions, including an in-plan conversion feature and procedures on the treatment of missing participants. We declared various parts from inventory and computer equipment as surplus. Total value of those was thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, and we directed staff to commence with recruiting a community representative to the Transit Authority, Transit Authority Board, as Don Melnick, who's known to many of us here in Lacy, is nearing the end of his term. His term expires December thirty-first. And I want to close this report with something really special. We, two of our drivers, within two days of each other, performed heroic acts. On June twenty-fifth, a driver named Glenn Drier heard some commotion coming from the back of his bus, and at first he didn't think too much about it until he heard a passenger yell out that her baby was not breathing. So he quickly pulled the bus over and activated the emergency alarm to summon aid. This guy is a former firefighter, so luckily he had life-saving skills and was able to, after four minutes, revive the baby. And medics got there, and they credited his actions with saving this child. And, you know, we were told that, you know, throughout this crisis, he maintained composure despite the chaotic scene and, of course, the panic of the parents. So that is Glenn. And then, two days before that, operator Scott Peterson was driving his route when a young passenger caught his eye. He was, he was a little boy who just seemed out of place. So he engaged, tried to engage the child and realized the little boy could not verbalize where he was going. So he summoned, you know, he called his supervisor, and they sent another supervisor out to meet the bus. In the meantime, police had been notified about this child who has special, special needs. He's nonverbal, and, of course, parents were panicking. And so father and child reunited fairly quickly with no harm done to the child. And in both these cases, you know, these operators were paying attention to who was on the bus and what was going on in the bus and acted quickly to save it. So I just, I just have never ceased to be impressed with Intercity Transit staff, and I thought you all would like to hear that. Regional Housing Council met on June twenty-sixth. We approved two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand in funding for an organization called Vital Housing, and they're going to be weatherizing and managing courtside apartments in Olympia for low-income housing. We approved a three-year plan for funding affordable housing projects to the tune of ten point seven million dollars. This is all in grant money that's come in. Funding includes one billion dollars for an organization called Ponza to develop a tiny home village in Lacy. And let's see, we we previewed what's called a crosswork that compares incentives, incentives for developing affordable housing, compares how each jurisdiction is approaching that. This document has, you know, a number of uses in the future, including helping developers and potential tenants and home buyers navigate what's going on and available in each community, and ultimately, we hope that it may help the jurisdictions align policies where it makes sense, so it's easier on everybody. And we also agreed to have a retreat to delve into the policymaking side of Regional Housing Council, which is something we've just barely dipped a toe into because we've had so many other fires to put out, as well as operational aspects of the organization. And then, the LOT, Clean Water Alliance, met on June twelfth, and we reviewed the preliminary budget for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six. We received an update on, from the Port of Olympia on their Bud Inlet Sediment Cleanup Initiative, which is actually starting to come along. We declared property that we own and LOT owns in the Deschutes Valley and Tomwater Surplus. We authorized the award of construction contact, contract to replace a roof on this, on the site. And once again, we celebrated the four awards that LOT received for their biological process improvements project, which was great. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Vasquez?
I have one report I wanted to share with the body. Nothing from the Board of Health today or Thurston Regional Planning Council, but I was in Chicago last week, but I managed to tune in to the Thurston Regional Climate Mitigation Collaborative Meeting, because we still had some more work to do after the retreat that happened back in June, no, April, excuse me, that Councilmember Cox attended on my behalf. So we had a presentation from LOT. Wendy Steffensen came and talked a lot about what LOT is doing to reduce their carbon emissions, reduce their reliance on greenhouse gas emitting energy sources like, you know, gas and shift to electrification. They're doing a great deal, right? They are using the waste that is produced from their their water purification processes to generate more fuel. They're, you know, we we heard a presentation here recently at a work session, but it's really impressive when you look at how thoughtful they're being about the energy that they use to clean our water and how they're reducing their reliance on anything that causes emissions in the environment. We also had a presentation from PSE. Christine Rompa came and talked about some of the efforts that PSE is taking to begin to shift toward more electrical energy sources and rely less on gas as well. We heard a presentation from Lindsay Fields, and we got a lot closer to selecting a regional initiative for two thousand and twenty-five, like what are the counties, the jurisdictions within Thurston County going to focus on for our regional initiative for two thousand and twenty-five? So I think we're actually going to make a decision on what we're going to pick to focus on next year at our next meeting, which I believe is in July. Yeah, it was late in Chicago during this meeting. Rebecca Harvey from the county also provided us an overview of the greenhouse gas inventory and some comp plan considerations. Our comprehensive planning process is going to need to consider or account for some of our climate targets this year. We're going to need to at least contemplate those things. And there's some funding from the State Commerce Agency to do a review of some of our emissions, like where we're at. So there was some conversation about whether we should use the recently-developed emissions report that we have or access the funding through the Department of Commerce to do a fresh review of emissions and whether or not one was better than another, unclear. So more to come on that. There was one thing I wanted to share with this group, though. The Community Advisory Work Group, which is a part of that Thurston Regional Climate Mitigation Collaborative, provided us a letter, and we didn't have a lot of time to talk about it or process it, because they gave us the letter just a few hours before the meeting happened, but it was very sobering, right, that the community members got together and put together this letter, and they presented it to elected officials on the group. So I wanted to take a minute and just share a paragraph or two from the letter. So, and I quote, "We desperately need to be more visionary in our policymaking. The collaborative needs additional staff to create more durable partnerships with other municipalities within and beyond Thurston County. We can create a grassroots lobbying block out of Washington's communities to demand federal and state funds we need to achieve our climate targets. We must not limit our public imaginations or ambitions. In recent years, Washington State has seen increased wildfire activity, extreme weather events, and droughts. Current global climate model projections only see these alarming trends increasing. Sea levels are rising, storms are raging, and temperatures are increasing. Climate change is here. We can no longer afford half measures. As the old adage says, the best time to act was yesterday, the second-best time is today." So in the letter, they also talk about how, you know, we set a goal of reducing climate or carbon emissions by forty-five percent by two thousand and thirty, and we have forty percent further more to go to hit that target. We've been working on it for a couple of years now, and we've reduced our emissions by five percent overall. So that means we would have to continually reduce by seven percent per year to hit our target by two thousand and thirty, so we're not on track. And that was the point of their letter, is we need to do more. So again, more to come on that, but it was a pretty serious moment for all of us on the committee as this letter was read to us, and they're basically saying, we need to do more on climate change. We need to think differently. So that is my report.
Sorry for the context of that. So three years has been five percent, right? And we need to do seven percent a year.
And I think that some of the pandemic reductions, because people weren't driving anywhere. anywhere, probably assisted with that modest reduction. We have made some energy efficiency moves in the policymaking realm, right? We've seen, like, building codes change to drive toward better efficiency of, like, new developments, but, yeah, like, people didn't drive in 2020, and so we saw emissions drop pretty dramatically for a little while, and we're pretty close to back to normal, to pre-2020 levels, which is a problem.
Well, that is sobering. Councilmember Dunning?
I don't have any reports, but I'll just very briefly expand on what the deputy mayor was saying about the Destination Master Plan. One of the biggest components of the Destination Master Plan is identifying those twenty-nine things, mainly who is the best at taking those and moving them forward. So the list that the deputy mayor talked about was a completely different list than I talked about, that what the Visitors Bureau would be in charge of, and so one thing is that not, it would not only help the Visitors Bureau, but it will also help the EDC and the different partners, the cities, the counties, really hone in on the things that they are best equipped at actually handling, and so that way, especially like the Visitors Bureau is not trying to take on things that they're not equipped at doing, so I think that will be a real big benefit moving forward.
Well, thank you for that. Well, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. The Fourth of July is around the corner, so we all know about the Third of July fireworks extravaganza, hopeful everyone can go out to that. And this is a reminder to the public that fireworks are banned in the city of Lacey, and I think we need to, you know, remind our neighbors sometimes of this, and this is a very difficult ordinance for the city of Lacey to enforce, and I feel my, it's just one of those very difficult issues, because unfortunately, the urban growth areas of the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tomwater are not under this ordinance. That would need to be a separate ordinance from the county, and we've reached out to the county, we've talked to the county in years past and saying, you know, for simplicity, it would be nice if we could all be under the same ordinance, because in many cases in Lacey, your next-door neighbor or the person across the street from you happens to be in our urban growth area and do not follow under the ordinance, and so they could be lighting off fireworks, but you're not. And so not only is that very difficult for our officers, it also causes a lot of confusion. And, you know, there's a lot of people who don't know where the boundaries are in our community, and see fireworks stand and think, oh, that's Lacey, well, no, that's actually not, that has to be within our urban growth area, because we're not in the city of Lacey at all, because we do, that ban's been on the books before anyone here was on council. And so it's been there for a long time. Lenny, want to add something to that?
Yeah, if I could just make a quick public service announcement on this, on the same topic. If the community would please not call nine-one-one to report people using fireworks, it creates a real problem, we need to leave those lines open for true emergencies, so I would just ask the public to please not call nine-one-one to report firework use, only report if there's something dangerous, you know, a fire caused by fireworks or something like that, but if you could refrain from that, it would be very helpful to the system and be good for everyone.
What is the non-emergency number to call? Is that, who should be called, chief?
The non-emergency number for TCOM would be the preference.
You know that off the top of our heads, what that number is?
So, Mr. Mayor, it is?
Don't know it offhand.
Here we go.
Three six zero seven zero four two seven four zero. One more time, that's three six zero seven zero four two seven four zero, and you can find this information on the city's webpage, on its homepage currently in the alert banner.
With that, again, everyone be safe. I also, you know, been reminded that, you know, one thing that we really care about here in Lacey is that we're a military community and we have a lot of veterans. Sometimes we forget that some of those veterans have been in situations where they've had PTSD, and it's, so it's not just our pets who we think of who struggle this time, but it can also be your next-door neighbor who is struggling during this time, where we think it's fun, a big explosion going off, maybe your next-door neighbor is not seeing that as fun, but is causing a serious stress on them. So we want to, of course, celebrate, but we also need to be thinking about our neighbors and their pets and maybe their situation, and not always think about, you know, everything we're doing, trying to make ourselves happy, let's be a little empathetic this time of year. I know pets have a hard enough time even during our Third of July extravaganza, but that's why we try to limit to, you know, one celebration, and people can hopefully prepare a little bit for that. And so with that, without objection, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned, and please, keep it classy, Lacey.